Zoning Board of Appeals, do please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening, we have a relatively short agenda, and I think we can move right along. But for those of you that are new to the proceedings of the Board, the meeting is divided into two parts. In the first half, it's a series of public hearings. Each applicant comes forward. They must state their name and then be sworn in. All testimony before the Zoning Board of Appeals has to be sworn testimony. At that time, we'll ask the applicant to give a brief description of what their application is about. Board members will have an opportunity to ask questions. When they've finished, the floor will be open for anyone from the public that wishes to address that application, but that application only. And those that wish to address the Board also must come forward and be sworn in. Once we've finished with the public hearings, we then turn to the deliberation phase of the meeting. And during this phase, there is no further public input. You're certainly welcome to stay and listen to our deliberations, but we will discuss the application and then proceed to vote on whether to grant or not that particular application. If you want to follow along on the agenda, copies of the agenda are available right up here in that tray on our counsel's desk. For tonight's meeting, all members are present, so unless there's a recusal at some point, our two alternates are sitting ready, but may or may not be needed. Okay, the first item, an adjourned public hearing, Anthony Leo, 11 Spring Street. The applicant has requested that we adjourn this hearing until our June meeting. Let's see, what?
June 8th.
June 8th, okay. I would just note that this application has been adjourned several times, and I would urge the applicant to prepare the materials that he needs so that we can move forward with this. And I would ask our administrative assistant to send a note or something to Mr. Leo and remind him that we can't simply continue to adjourn this and urge him to... He's missing some materials. Get those materials, get them to us so that we can act on this, hopefully at the next meeting. Okay, so I move that item number one be adjourned to June 8th.
Second.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recusals? Okay, adjourned. Items number two and number three both concern Malabar Realty, 798 Duchess Turnpike, and 219 Over rocker Road. One is a whole set of variances. The other is a special use permit. Again, at the request of the applicant, or the applicant has requested that this matter be adjourned to the June meeting to give them time to prepare some legal materials to address issues that came up in the earlier hearing. This, it seems to me, is reasonable. So I move that we adjourn items number two and number three to June...
8th.
8th.
Second.
Okay, any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recusals? Okay, so, items one, two, and three, adjourned. This brings us to item number four. Dennis Codrington, 46 South Gate Drive. Are you here?
Yes.
Yes, sir, okay. Please come forward, have a seat. If you just state your name into the microphone for the record.
Dennis Codrington.
Mr. Codrington, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, so would you just briefly describe why you're here?
Good afternoon, good evening, Reda. I had some remodeling down at my residence, and that is at 46 South Gate Drive in the tongue of Kipsey. In starting that construction, I removed the fence to the front of the property to provide proper access for the construction vehicles and the work material delivery. At this point, I'm looking to replace the fence. And the fence I'm looking to replace is a chain link fence. It's about four feet high. It's the original fence that I purchased the property with back in 87. The fence I'm looking to replace it with, it's an aluminum fence. It's a picket fence. The pickets are like three-quarter inch square. The posts is like two and a half inch square. There are eight-foot panels, and they're five feet high. And that's the replacement I am looking to have permission to install.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Christine, any questions?
No questions. You answered my question about how high the current chain link meant to fence.
Okay. Betty?
I have a question. You haven't told us in your application why you need the fence to be five feet.
I just simply select one of the products that were being offered. Five feet is desirable. There is no special reason other than it's kind of like asking me why I choose a Honda or Volkswagen. It's just one of those things where you have a preference, but there's no big reason. But three and a half, I thought was going to be a low fence that anyone can hop over, especially the deers in the neighborhood. And I thought four, which I currently have, I've seen them jump over that. I thought it was reasonable to maybe think that five feet will keep them out.
I don't know the answer to that one.
I don't know either.
It won't, yeah, good luck with that.
Yeah, Art says it won't.
Okay, I've seen them effortlessly jump over the fence that's currently there.
Oh, yeah.
So I was just thinking that maybe that'll keep them out. But the bottom line, I'm just trying to replace the fence that was always there, that's all.
But the fence that was there was four feet, correct?
That is correct.
And then this one?
This one is one foot higher.
Fine. And since it doesn't provide, you know, any kind of security really, or privacy, I guess we need a reason to know why five, and that's why I asked you that.
I just thought five was the highest that they're offering. If they were offering a higher fence, I probably would have happily go after that. I just think the higher fence is making it less likely for the deers to be in at the back. I've seen them go over the current fence effortlessly.
Okay, I have no more questions.
Art?
If we asked you to take it down to four feet, would you be agreeable to that?
I...
I mean, the deer are going to clear a five-foot fence anyway. That's not going to stop them.
The fence is not there for the deer. That's one of the benefits I'm hoping that I get out of it, because the current fence, I've seen them go over it effortlessly. I will do whatever this Board is asking me to do.
Do they make the same fence in four feet? Do you know? Is that an option?
I have the booklet, I can take a look.
You did a great job in the house, by the way.
Oh, thank you, sir.
We were amazed when we came by. I hadn't been by since you applied for the variance. That's the first time I've seen the house.
Okay.
It's amazing.
And I'd also add that the style of fence is very attractive.
Yeah. I wanted it to be very transparent. One of the concerns I have with fence that blocks view in is that if the bad guys gets behind the fence, you providing them perfect protection.
It's true.
Mr. Codrington?
Yes.
There's only a sketch here of the fence. You have a brochure that has a picture of the fence when you're through with it.
That's right there.
Oh.
I have provided copies.
The last page.
In the package.
Okay, and what color is it going to be?
Black.
Yeah, that isn't...
Yeah.
You wouldn't mind passing the brochure around, I'd appreciate it.
I can do that right now.
Okay, thank you.
And I did note that there are different pens there, so I'm not sure if they offer it in four feet.
We can go on, we can move on, we can see that one for sure.
Okay. Larry, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Tony?
No questions.
And Carmen is...
She's buying the fence.
Personally, I would certainly object to the height that you're requesting, but it's not a solid fence. And actually, it's rather attractive. And it is in black. You want it in black?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay.
I didn't hear your earlier comment. You mentioned some...
Yes, the fact that it is not a solid fence
Okay.
makes a difference too in the appearance and everything, so.
Okay, I wouldn't want that level of privacy. It's just my personal preference.
Right. Often, it does look like a compound. Anyway, no further questions.
Okay.
Okay, I think the issue right now is whether or not he can do it in a four-foot height. Okay, what I think I'm hearing from the Board is that our preference would be that in terms of the height of the fence, that basically you replace what's there now. You have a four-foot fence, replace it with a much nicer four-foot fence, rather than going for the extra height, yeah?
Even though I don't see the height offering in that booklet, I'm starting to vaguely recall that it was a half a foot difference. It was either five feet or four and a half. I think those were the two heights that they were offering. But I don't see it there, but I'm vaguely recalling now that it was a half a foot difference. And I choose the taller one.
Is there a variance for the old fence?
I purchased the house in 87 as is.
With the old fence, a four-foot fence?
Yes, with the fence that's currently there.
Yeah, that, from the looks of the fence, it's been there quite a while.
Yeah.
So it may well be before we had a front yard fence restriction.
I think that's been a long time, like...
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'm just wondering.
I don't...
Did you explain my review? Would you like me to explain?
Yeah, okay.
So this is a very nice fence.
Thank you.
And he's below the height requirement for his rear yard. And the front part, the reason why I wrote the review in regards to reduction in the front yard was because I felt that it's not going across the driveway. So you're eventually going to, you're not going to keep out deer anyways.
Oh, well, the, from the front of the house, if you go towards the side?
Yep, yep.
That will be fenced in, I think I provided a drawing.
And that's all legal. Your variance is for this little piece in the front, right?
I thought it was for the two streets.
Two front yards.
Oh, because you're a corner lot.
I'm not sure, you have to tell me.
So I, actually, I suggest, it's only my suggestion, that you're allowed to have a five-foot fence from the front or from the driveway side of the house back, and then around on the direct corner of the street. That was the main intent, for having something just a little bit smaller.
The curve...
And it was mainly based on, I understand, securing the backyard and keeping the deer out.
Right, okay.
But as a five-foot-high fence on the driveway side with it being open, I saw that, I pictured the deer would just walk around that anyways and chew on your shrubs in the front of your property.
That is correct, I completely agree.
Yeah, so in other words, you could have the five-foot in the back, but the curved portion would be four feet. The part that's actually really right on the street.
I'm agreeable to whatever the Board requires. I'm only sharing that I don't think the offering is for four feet. I think it's four and a half and five feet.
It doesn't say. It is a nice fence.
Yeah, and I couldn't...
But I'm sure then it's not in there.
It's not, it's not in there. So what we can, what we can, what we will do is we can grant the variance for the five feet, and then for, in the front part, we'll say up to four and a half. So if that's the dimension that they make it in, okay, then it's four and a half. Does that work out?
That will be fine with me, except I don't quite understand the variance up to five feet and then that little caveat there. I don't think I was clear on what you're saying.
Okay, because the zoning code makes a distinction between fences that are in front yards by the street and fences that are in the back.
Okay.
So in other words, if you want a five-foot fence in the back, fine, okay. The code says that in that curved portion, in the front yards, the maximum height is three and a half. So what we're saying, we'll give you a variance that allows you to go up to four and a half.
Okay.
So that if that's the dimension that the company makes your fence in, fine. If they make it in a four-foot, fine. But four and a half is, it'll be a little taller than the existing one, but it'll look better.
Okay, I'm agreeable to that. I'd just like to understand very clearly, when you say the front, what portion are we talking about?
It's the, it's the curved portion that is right on the street.
Okay.
Since you have a corner house, technically, you have two front yards.
That's my understanding.
One on each street. So what we're saying is that this portion that's curved around on the corner...
Okay, just that front piece?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're not talking about the side street?
Yeah, all back here, you, five feet is...
You've already established that it's kind of your backyard.
Okay.
Yeah, and so five feet back there is fine.
Okay, I do think there's a four and a half offering.
Okay.
Because I recall six inches being the difference.
Yeah, we'll phrase the variance so that if they do four and a half, you'll be able to do that.
Okay, and I think they do.
Okay.
I just have to verify it.
Yeah, it just didn't happen to be in that brochure, so. Okay.
Is the left side of the property, this area, is that a fence also?
The...
Curve is here, and on the left side, as you're looking at it with the driveway, is that meant to be fenced as well?
The entire property is fenced.
So anything that's in front of the house technically would be the front yard?
That's the front.
Yes.
The front line of the house.
Yeah, that is, that is true, that is true.
So from the front line of the house forward is considered the front yard. Thirty feet whichever is... Sorry, he actually has it. It's either the building or the theater is front, so if I find it, or on this house, whichever is...
Okay. I mean, I don't have a problem with a five-foot fence along that left property line. I don't think, it doesn't interfere with any visual, it doesn't screen traffic. I'm perfectly willing to do five feet on that left side. And what we'll do is, we'll just have to phrase the variance to make it clear that we're talking about that, the curved portion.
You would do five feet on one side and four and a half on the other? Aren't you talking about four and a half on the curved side? Yeah, so you don't think they should be the same?
Is this the same thing?
Yes, yes.
To me, it makes so little, it would be so little difference. And, I mean, the issue with this code restriction is for these corner situations. Because it's there that if you have a high, especially a solid fence, you really do, you know, get this kind of fortress look, and you interfere with, you know, traffic sightlines and all kinds of stuff. But that, I don't think that's an issue on the, on that left side. On the, I guess it's the west side. So, I don't know, any questions, comments? I mean, is everybody happy? This kind of compromise, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 46 South Gate Drive? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recusals? Okay, thank you very much. Item number six, Richard Salage, Beleg, 9 Martis Way. Okay, good evening.
My name is Richard Salage.
Salage.
You're Salage, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay.
Hey, looking for a variance to build a shed in front of the principal residence?
Well, I already had a variance for a 10 by 10 shed.
Okay.
And I want to remove that shed and build a bigger one since I don't like to keep anything in the yard, equipment and everything, and I'm running out of space.
Okay.
So I'm going to remove the 10 by 10 and get a 16 by 26.
Okay, and this is, this is a manufactured shed?
Amish-built shed, yes.
That'd be just moved in and...
Yeah, they come, they build it on-site, they panelize it and build it on-site.
Okay. All right, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
And Betty?
I have no questions.
All right.
No questions.
And it looked like, when we faced the existing shed, that it, the extra space is going to kind of go off to the right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Larry?
No question.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
Yes, I do have a question. Do you have horses there?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
No, I don't. It's all for my power equipment and everything else. I want to get my garage uncluttered a little bit.
Yes, it's quite a piece of property.
Yes, it's beautiful up there.
It is, it is, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 6 Martis Way? Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, Tim Callen, 29 Cardinal Drive. Good evening. Just say your name, please.
Timothy Callen.
Mr. Callen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what brings you here tonight?
I am trying to get, build a deck, a back deck. Currently, I don't have a deck, so we definitely need to put one up pretty soon.
Okay, and you need a variance because this is going to be located 15 feet from the side lot line, and the code calls for 20?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Christine?
Okay, so this is to replace a deck that was previously there?
Yes, before I closed on the house, I guess the previous deck never had a permits or C of O, so they had to, in order for me to close on the house, they had to take it down, so.
Betty?
I have no questions.
All right.
No questions.
Okay. The deck that you proposed to build, is it pretty much the same size as...
The same size, yes. A little bit bigger, but not towards the one neighbor's side, but toward, you know, the other side, so.
Okay, but otherwise, pretty much same?
Pretty much going to be the same footings and everything.
And same style?
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address 29 Cardinal Drive? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, my name is Ishma Lopez.
Okay, please sit down and state your name and be sworn in, please.
Yes, my name is Ishma Lopez, and I live on 31 Cardinal Drive.
Mr. Lopez, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, I live right next to 31, he's my neighbor, and I don't have a problem with that they're going up five feet short, so. I have no problem with it.
Okay, okay, very good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else, 31 or 29 Cardinal Drive? If there are no further questions from the Board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recusals? Okay. Thank you very much. Item seven, Frank Galante, 7 Millbank Road.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Frank Galante.
Mr. Galante, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you guide?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, yes, sir, so.
I'm applying for a variance, also for a deck. And basically, we want to build a deck in the backyard that's going to be placed between the house and the pool. The, maybe, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you? Did you want to start?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. The basic issue is that we're going to need a variance because the deck will be close to the side fence.
Okay, and it looks in the variance, it'll be, at its closest point, it'll be 11 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
Yeah, there was really nothing in the application that told me why you needed to have the deck on that side.
As opposed to the other side of the...
As opposed to, yes. Like using the same footprint as the house and having the big portion of the deck on this side.
Well, the three-season room, that's that square part jetting out of the design, has actually a door opening on that side. And that was one of the issues, it allows us easy access to the, allows easier access to the deck. The other reason is we wanted to keep as much of the lot open for, you know, for the yard open as possible. Aesthetically, it looks better on that side.
Okay, now, is the deck going to be raised? It's going to be high up, right, so that it's going to be above where it says slate patio?
Yeah, there originally was a slate patio, it was ground level. The deck obviously is going to be raised. uh, the deck obviously is going to be raised, uh, I think forty-eight inches, something around for, uh, something around that, I believe. It's going to be raised to the level, almost the level of the, the, the door from the, uh, from the three season room.
Okay. Okay, all right.
The split rail fence that's to the right of the pool, if you're looking from the backyard, is that on your, on the property line? We couldn't quite figure that out.
That is, uh? That's not mine, it's my neighbor's.
Is it? Do you know where it is in regards to the property line, how close, or?
I think it is pretty close to the property line, but I'm pretty sure it's on my neighbor's side.
Yeah, according to the drawing, it's, it's really close.
Yeah.
And the deck is going to be as tall as the top of the pool? That's your goal, to walk right from the deck and run into the pool, right?
That was what the, that was what the, uh?
That's your intent?
That was what my constructor suggested, that's what he'd shown us pictures of.
That's fine, okay. No more questions.
Okay. Actually, I don't have any further, uh, Larry?
No question.
Tony?
I'm just curious why you're extending the deck four feet further out from the line of the house, following the line of the house back towards, uh, directly towards the pool. Looks like you're extending the, the deck four?
The slate patio, we have the slate patio there in place, it's turned out to be too small for, uh, for the things we put on it, between, uh, between a grill and, um, and the tables and chairs, um, it, uh, it ends up being tiny. So we extended it out, gave us, I think it'll give us a little bit more room to, to fully enjoy the, that area around the pool.
Any, anything further, Tony?
Oh, that's.
Oh, okay, uh, Carmen?
And, and the split, the split rail fence is your neighbor's, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm trying to remember, as we were facing the house to the right, wasn't there another fence there as well?
Facing to the right, no, no fence, there's.
You didn't, you don't have a fence there?
I don't have a fence, no, no, there's, it's tree lined.
No further questions?
I, I, I guess, um, I, one, one other question, and that's that, because you're planning to kind of have that deck dug out a little bit, uh, from the, from the line at the house, um, do you, have you given any thought to putting some kind of maybe plantings or some kind of screening that would, you know, be in, both in between the, the proposed deck and the, and the split rail fence, but also so that when somebody is from the street is looking in, it doesn't look like there's something sticking out?
Yeah, uh, we'll have to put up some kind of privacy, you know, some kind of, either, it could be, we could use, uh, we could use plants or we could use, uh, some, uh, some fencing.
Yeah, or both.
Or both.
Yeah.
We haven't thought, we hadn't thought that far, we knew we were going to do it, but we don't know how to do it. The, uh, the original owner had a fence there on the slant, uh, to keep eyes off of, uh, off of, um, off of their deck, I guess, uh, but that didn't seem, that, that fence was gone, uh, uh, and we took it, we took it out because of that, um, but, uh, but yeah, the, we're, we're going to want a little bit of, uh, privacy and we're going to, we, we don't necessarily have to have people seeing that, that edge of deck, no?
Yeah, okay, so we, we may condition the variance with, um, a requirement that, that, you know, when the deck is complete, some kind of screening or, or planting could be put in.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, uh, is there anyone that wishes to address seven Milbank Road? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number eight, Red Roof Inn, twenty-three forty-nine South Road. Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Gavin, I'm, uh, from Columbus, Ohio, representing Red Roof.
Okay.
Mr. Gavin, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truths, I hope you got?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so I think we have the application, you've, you've put in, there's, there's several drawings, but, um, just in terms of the structure, what are you plan, what, what's going to change, I guess? What, what's going to be installed?
Not clear on, on the question. What is going to change at the site, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Now I'm clear on it.
Sorry.
Actually, the only thing that will change at the site that we have a responsibility for is this, um, fourteen-foot canopy. Okay, it has down lighting, it is a fabricated unit of all aluminum, aluminum fixtures at the top, uh, it will have a solid metal aluminum roof to it, so there won't be any up lighting, it will all be downlit. Actually, we are asking for a, a variance for the lighting of it. The down lighting exceeds the code, which is point oh two at a property line, but it's not the property line, it's the dividing line between the two hotels. And since it's back in the parking lot, almost two hundred and thirty feet, um, we were asking for a variance to allow it to have the lighting that it has now, as proposed.
Okay. And I'm, I'm, I must admit that, um, even though for many years I was a physics teacher, I had to go back and look up, um, exactly what a, a foot candle was, and it turns out that, um, it's a, it's a unit that's, that's only used in, in, you know, certain applications of lighting engineering. And, um, you know, I, I in fact had to, you know, go and do some, do some calculations, and I'm, and I'm not going to fall it back into professorial mode here, um, but I just wanted to give some people an idea of, of, of what, um, a, what, what these numbers meant. And, um, so I did a, a little calculation, instead of foot candle, the current term is called lumens, and if, if you want, just a way of thinking about it, if you have a hundred watt bulb, um, that is sixteen hundred lumens, okay, so a hundred watt light bulb is sixteen hundred. If you take that light bulb and put it ten feet away, so I guess what, from here to the wall, and you look at it, um, the, the light intensity will be between one and two foot candles or, or lumens per square foot. So, um, the, the lighting that you're requesting is, um, about five foot candles, um, where our code, um, requires point oh two. So, so five foot candles then would be about what you would see if you took two hundred watt light bulbs and put them on that wall and, and stood here and held up a sheet of paper, the, the light that falls on that sheet of paper would be, um, about five foot candles. Which is, I think, what you're, what you're asking for. Okay, we try, we try. Okay, it turns out there are standards for illumination, and I, I didn't know this, I had to go to an engineering textbook, um, but it, but it turns out that what they call roadway lighting, in other words, street lighting, um, in, in, at night, is recommended to be at least two lumens per square foot. Your living room should be between five and fifteen, if you're working in an office like this, we're, we, if we're, if we're up to code here, we're looking at about a hundred to two hundred foot candles. Okay. So, so, sorry to, to do this, there will not be an exam. But what, but what I wanted, what I want to suggest is that the level of illumination that's being required by this variance, um, is the, the level of illumination that would be required for an ordinary street and parking area anyway. So that it, in, in my opinion, this, this is a reasonable request, and I don't think is going to create a problem. The, the one question I, that I did have is, um, what color is the lighting going to be?
The light is, down light is red, because it comes through a red lens.
Okay.
I don't know if you have that rendering in your package.
Who do we have colors?
Well, there's, there's.
This is kind of, excuse me, are you rendering of what it looks like? I can kind of pull this out.
Oh, wonderful.
Oh, good.
And, uh?
We like pictures.
I was looking through my package to see if I had brought others, but somehow or other, it loses me.
Okay, thank you.
See if I'm not well balanced right now, riding the car for nine and a half hours, not my idea, but.
Okay. All right, so, Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I, I have no questions, the whole area looked underlit to me. I mean, the first thing that occurred to me was that if I had to park my car and go to either of those, um, places, there, it could have used more lighting.
Oh. Okay.
And also, it doesn't impact on other buildings, though, I mean, it's like, oh, no?
Yeah, I mean?
Property line is so unique in that it?
It really is odd, yeah. I mean, it's, it's right.
Not crazy about red, but?
Basically, the curb, and then there's a parking area, and then there's another hotel.
Yeah. You know, Jim, I thank you for the illumination of the candles, too.
Okay, you're, 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 you're welcome. By the way, that's a topic that's almost never covered in introductory physics, that's why I had to go look it up.
That's the first time I've ever seen it.
Yeah. Um, Art, any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Larry?
The county's thing.
Tony?
I have no question.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Yeah, and the, the county has no, has no.
Okay.
Okay, um, anyone in the audience wishes to talk about twenty-three forty-nine South Road, Red Roof Inn? If not, um, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I have one question.
Oh, yeah, okay.
On the picture, the part that says red roof, that's not part of the application, right?
No, we have a designer who likes to design, so, and you put a rendering in there and he goes, "Well, we should put the sign in," and I said, "The sign's not part of this."
Yeah.
He put it in there anyway.
Oh. Okay, as, as long as everybody understands that.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
That's already, I think, we already have a permit for that and everything's installed in it.
Oh, uh? Yeah, can, can we keep that photo, or that rendering that you get? Okay, that'll be part of the record, okay. Okay. All right, uh, so the public hearing's been closed, um, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Appreciate your coming here to help us out with this.
Anything for my client.
Okay. All right, that brings us to the end of the, uh, public hearings. I think we just go right into the deliberation?
Right along.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
All right, so we are, uh, one, two, and three have been adjourned, we are to, um, item four.
Jim, why don't we just take the two, the two families that are here, the two people that are here?
Oh, okay.
If that's okay.
Uh, so let's see, that's, um, item five, right? Six Marthus Way?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's see, item five, okay. A variance to allow an accessory structure to be located in front of the principal structure, uh, is a type two action, so there's no environmental, um, action we need to take. The staff has produced a report recommending, um, that this application be approved. Any discussions? Okay, if not, Christine, you want to do this one?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. The decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the variance has been made and seconded. There's any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recused? Okay, the variance is approved. All right. Okay, and, uh, item eight, Red Roof Inn, twenty-three forty-nine South Road, a variance to allow canopy, canopy lighting with an illumination at the north property line of five point five three foot candles, where zero point two foot candles is allowed. This is an unlisted action, uh, there is a, uh, EAF short form that's been submitted as part of the application, so, uh, I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of evaluating the environmental impact at twenty-three forty-nine South Road.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that the ZBA, based on the information contained in the EAF short form, finds that the action proposed at twenty-three forty-nine South Road will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, and the county, uh, has declared this a matter of local concern, so there's no issue there, um, there's a staff report in your packet that recommends that, um, this application, uh, be approved. Any discussion, questions? Betty, you want to do this one?
Uh, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. In approving this variance, the board, um, is based on the review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members and the staff report. And in approving this variance, the board adopt as findings the determinations as found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the variance, uh, for the Red Roof Inn's been made and seconded, any, um, further questions? If not, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, approved, seven zero, and, uh, may you have a safe trip home.
Thank you very much.
And enjoy yourself in Poughkeepsie.
I, I plan to get dinner, sleep.
I'll bet. Okay. All right, um, back now to item?
Four.
Four. Dennis Codrington, forty-six South Gate Drive, variance to allow a fence of up to five feet heights to be located in a front yard where the maximum height of the fence is three point five feet. This, um, so, um, in the, um, it's a type two action, so there's no environmental, and in the staff report, um, the, um, conclusion was that, that, um, that in the front yard, no more than a three and a half foot fence, um, would be, would be. than a three-and-a-half-foot fence would be, would be necessary. Thing of the basis of our discussion, we, we wanna, we wanna modify both the, the motion of, for the variance and make some slight modifications to the, to the staff report, to the findings. So, let me see. I wanna, I wanna rely on counsel to, to get this right. And so...
You gonna do this one, Jim? You gonna do this one, then, right?
Well...
Sounds like a plan.
I, 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 I thought I would give it a shot, and you, people correct me here. So, my understanding, we, 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 motion is to allow a fence of up to four-and-a-half feet in height along the front yards facing South Gate Drive and, what is that other street? Robin Road. Okay. So, the, so the curved portion along Robin Road and South Gate Drive, the variance would allow a fence of up to four-and-a-half feet in height. The other fences in the application, the variance would allow fences of up to five feet in height. Is that clear enough, or do we need more?
I think that's what we discussed.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that's what we meant.
Right.
But it needs to get translated into legalese. Okay? So, are we...
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Good. All right. So, then, I don't have a copy of the staff report.
He might get it. Oh, I thought you wanted, I thought you wanted this. Report said, okay, right?
Okay. Because I think we just need to modify... Okay. So, for the findings, whether an undesirable, undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment of other properties, the, the board finds that the open design of the fence, even at a height of four-and-a-half feet, will not interfere with site distances. It will maintain a, an openness to the neighborhood, and therefore will not change the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefit could be achieved by some other method, the, the board notes that the proposed fence is replacing an existing chain-link fence, and by, by the very nature of replacement, there, there is no feasible alternative. And that we, we also note again that the proposed fence is much more attractive than the existing one. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, the fact that it is greater than three-and-a-half feet in a front yard is substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions, the board finds that it will not have any adverse effect. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it's, it's self-created in the sense that he wants to put up a fence. It's not self-created in the sense that it's replacing a fence that's been there for many, many years. Okay. So, with those modifications to the findings, I move that the board approve the request for the variance set forth in item number four, as, as modified. This decision is based on the review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the result of site visits by board members, and the staff report, as, as modified. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations as modified found in items one through five of the staff report. So move. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Okay. Discussion? I think what we've got here is a, a reasonable compromise between what Mr. Codrington wants to do and the, and the code, and I think as both Art and Betty noted, when we were out there, we were impressed with how attractive the property is. It's, it's, it's very, very nicely done. Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal? Okay. Approved, seven-zero. Okay. Item six, Tim Callen, 29 Cardinal Drive. A variance to allow a proposed deck to be 15 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. It's a type-two action, no environmental proceedings are needed. And in your packet, there's a staff report recommending that this be approved. Any questions, comments? Okay. Art?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth on item number six.
Yeah.
This decision is based on a review, a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by the board members and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. There are no restrictions on this one?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the variance at 29 Cardinal Drive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal? Okay. Item number seven is approved, or six.
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 Item number seven, Frank Galente, 7 Milbrook Road. A variance to allow proposed deck to be located 11 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. It's a type-two action. The staff report recommends that this variance be approved. I think the only thing we would add to it...
Conditions.
Is a condition to, that some kind of screening has to be provided on that side. Okay. Larry, you wanna do this one?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by the board, by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. So move.
Okay. And we wanna add the, as a condition...
Approval of this variance is subject to, to the condition of the providing of...
Screening.
Privacy screening.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve number seven made and seconded. There's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item seven is approved, seven-zero. There's one remaining item. The, from the planning board is a request that they serve as lead agent on the environmental review for Oakwood Friends School solar panels at 22 Spackenkill Road. Any question, discussion on that? I have not seen it. It's, apparently, they're gonna put some panels up where, on their, on their campus. Okay. If not, I move that the town of Poughkeepsie ZBA agree to the request from the planning board that they serve as lead agent for the Oakwood Friends School panels, 22 Spackenkill Road environmental review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Brings to the end of the agenda. No further business. So, I move that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.